Proceed.
I thank you. I will call to order the meeting of the planning commission for the city of San Clemente for Wednesday, May 5th, 2021. And our second item in the agenda is the pledge of allegiance. Bart, could you please lead us in the pledge? And I'll remind everybody to go on mute, please.
Please follow after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Bart. Item three is the roll call. Gabriel, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Chairman Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Kaczynski.
Here.
Commissioner Crandall.
Here.
Chair Pro Tem Wu.
Yeah.
Vice Chair Blackwell.
Here.
And Chair Rulin.
Here. Item four is special orders of business, which we have done. And item five is our minutes. We have two sets of minutes from the study session and regular commission meeting of April 7th. So for the first one, the study session of April 7th, is there a request for change or motion?
I have movie approved.
I'll second.
Motion by Brown, second by Blackwell. I'll call the roll. Commissioner Wu?
Hi.
Commissioner Crandall?
I was not at the meeting, so I abstain.
Okay. Commissioner Blackwell?
Hi.
Commissioner Kaczynski?
I abstain, please.
Commissioner Brown? All right. And Rulin votes aye, passes 4-0 to abstain. And the next one was our minutes of the regular planning commission meeting of April 7th. Are there changes or a motion?
Movie approved.
I'll second. So motion by Brown, second by Rulin. And I'll call the roll. Commissioner Wu?
Hi.
Commissioner Crandall?
Abstain.
Commissioner Blackwell?
Aye.
Commissioner Kaczynski?
Abstain.
Commissioner Brown? Sorry, Commissioner Brown?
All right.
And Rulin votes aye, passes 4-0 with two abstainings. Our next item is oral and written communications. Members of the public may address the commission on matters of public interest which pertain to the city and are not otherwise on the agenda. Speakers can submit their comments on agenda items, excuse me, to the planning commission electronically. Material may be emailed to www.sanclemente.org/pcpubliccomment. Transmitted by 3:00 PM on planning commission meeting days as recommended. The planning commission is not permitted to discuss or take action on items that do not appear on the agenda. Gabriel, do we have any communications for items that are not on the agenda tonight?
Chairman Rulin, we do not have any comments over here.
Okay, thank you. Item seven is the consent calendar. We have no items on our consent calendar. Item eight is the public hearings. We have no public hearings this evening. So item nine is new business. We have one item, the draft housing element and safety element update. And our planner, Jennifer Savage, is going to take us through that. So floor is yours, Jennifer.
Good evening, Chair Commissioners. Thank you for participating this evening to discuss and review the draft housing element and safety house, safety element updates. I will be turning the presentation time over to our consultants, Veronica Tam and Associates. And we have Veronica and Jamie from our consultant firm this evening. And I will go ahead and turn that over. Thank you.
Thank you. I assume staff is going to launch the PowerPoint.
Welcome back, Veronica.
Thank you. So we're at the point where we are ready to kind of go over the housing draft housing element and send it off to the state. So before we do that, we wouldn't certainly want to get your comments and input onto the housing element so that it will be reflecting your ideas about the housing element. So, next slide. What we want to do is just again give an overview of the draft housing element, what's the contents, what are the significant changes compared to the current housing element that city has? And then would be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Next slide. Just to give an overview of what the housing element is, again, for the public that may not have attended some of the previous meetings that we had before, the housing element is part of your general plan, is one of the required elements. In the housing element, we have to look at the needs in the community and what are the best way to accommodate those needs. But the needs that we're talking about is not only the current residents of the city of San Clemente, but also future residents that may come to the city as well. So the housing element is still a policy document. It provides goals, objectives, and policies for housing and identify the housing conditions within the city and the needs in the community. Even though it may look very technical and very specific, it's still a policy document because it's part of your general plan. The housing element is a little bit different from the rest of your general plan in that it has to be updated every eight years on a statutory deadline. That's the only element of the entire general plan that has that kind of statutory deadline. What we are dealing with is October 15, 2021. That's the deadline that we are aiming to achieve. And we want to be able to adopt the housing element by that deadline. The housing element is also different from the rest of your general plan in that it's the only element that has to go through a very rigorous review by a state agency for compliance to state law because the housing element is probably the most legally regulated element of the entire general plan. The agency responsible for that review is the State Department of Housing and Community Development, HCD. So throughout this whole process, I think you've heard the term, the agency HCD quite a bit. This is the agency that's responsible for implementing the state law on housing element and they're responsible for the review. The current, the future housing element, the housing element that we're working on is known as the sixth cycle of your update. Your current housing element, the fifth cycle is going to be valid until October 15 this year. And starting October 15, 2021, we'll go into the sixth cycle, housing element that covers an eight-year planning period. Next slide. Just to go a little bit more details about the, what are the requirements of the housing element? There's some key components or key contents of the housing element. We look at the current and future needs in the community. We must be able, the housing element must show how the city is going to accommodate projected housing need as mandated by the state through the regional housing needs allocation process, RENA, RHNA. Again, that's another term that you will hear or you've been hearing quite a lot throughout the housing process. That regional housing needs allocation, to accommodate that, we must be able to demonstrate that we have adequate sites to accommodate the regional housing needs allocation. In the housing element, we also need to look at resources and opportunities as well as constraints to housing, housing development and improvement in the community. Now, we have to mitigate governmental constraints. If rules and regulations in the city considered to be constraining housing development in your community, we have to mitigate those constraints. We also need to, to the extent possible, mitigate kind of market constraints as well. In terms of the next kind of component to the housing element, we, you know, once you identify the needs, you identify the resources that you may have and also the constraints that you may have, then we set the goals, policies, and programs to, to meet the housing needs. And specifically, we have to look at increasing housing production. We have to look at programs that preserve existing affordable housing because it's very expensive to build affordable housing in California, particularly in Southern California. And therefore, to preserve what you currently have is important. We also need to have programs and policies that address the existing conditions of housing and facilitate the development of housing for all income groups and different household types. This is while the state law says, you know, facilitate the development of housing for all income groups, the focus is on low and moderate income because the market pretty much takes care of the above moderate income. So the goals policies that you, you see in your housing element has, is, they tend to be focused more on the affordable housing side of the equation. Regarding special needs by definition by law, those are the elderly, disabled, homeless, female-headed households, farm workers, and households that are large, considered to be large households with five or more members. Those are defined in state law as special needs populations. And last but not least, at least, is the fair housing, promoting fair housing, make sure that the city is affirmatively furthering fair housing. The housing element then, based on all the constraints and resources that you have, have quantified objectives for production, for conservation, and rehabilitation. Next slide. So when you send a housing element to the state, when the housing element is so heavily regulated by state law and there's an agency responsible for reviewing the agent of the housing element for compliance for state law, there, there are consequences for not meeting this, this compliance status. What we, when we sent the housing element to the state and for their review, our goal is to get a finding of substantial compliance from the state. But if you do not have that, well, actually, let me spin it in a more positive way. First, if you have a, a, a housing element that's, that is substantially compliant with state law, it actually gives you a legally adequate general plan because your housing element is considered an integral component of your general plan. So if the housing element is complying with state law, kind of, it protects the general plan as well. If, if a key component of your housing element is deemed to be out of compliance, it kind of renders the validity of your overall general plan. And, and that validity is important in the event of the lawsuit, of a lawsuit. The housing element is the most frequently litigated element of the general plan. When a housing element is, if a housing element is involved in a lawsuit and, and a jurisdiction can be sued by the governor, the state attorney general, not the governor, but the state attorney general, it can be sued by nonprofits, it can be sued by any organizational individual, or it can be sued by developers. And that's the, that's many different situations where communities are sued under housing element. If a housing element is involved in a, in a lawsuit, a housing element that has a compliance status from the state is presumed to be valid. And so whoever is bringing the lawsuit would be, would have the burden of proof that you, they would have to prove that the housing element is in fact, out of compliance with state law, even though a state agency has already found it to be compliant with state law. So the burden of proof would be on the litigant if we, if we have a housing element that's deemed compliant. You also have, you would also be eligible for state funds. And for cities that have a housing element that complies state law, you would be automatically eligible for SB2 grants. It functions almost like a block grant. The city did receive some funding for SB2 grants and LEAP grants. There are also other kind of affordable housing funds that's on a competitive basis. And, and the scoring for, of the, of the application for those competitive applications leans very heavily on, on having a housing element that's complying with state law. So if you, if you don't have that, your application for funding is pretty much like, not competitive at all. So a lot of nonprofits really relies on a housing element that's complying with state law for them to be able to get funding such as low-income housing tax credits. In the event that a housing element is involved in a lawsuit and the court has found housing element to be out of compliance and, and during that time, you, you can face a fine by the court. And the fine is up to 100,000, it's up to $10,000 per month per housing unit that you're short, like you're not able to accommodate arena, for example. Up to $100,000 per month for the first three months. If your housing element continued to be out of compliance and you still, you know, couldn't get it to, to be a compliance status, it increased to $300,000 per month. And then if it continues to be out of compliance beyond six months, it'll be $600,000 per month. So that the fines can be quite damaging for a local jurisdiction. You also have, cities have, that have their building permit power withheld by the court. Definitely for the city of Pleasanton, that happened, that they were not, the city was sued by a nonprofit and during the time that they were working out the settlement agreement, the city was not able to approve any, any building permit, issue any building permit. And, and that includes non-residential, commercial, or industrial, or major home renovation permits. The court would only approve like certain affordable housing development, for example, during that time. That would be the most extreme case when it comes to the penalty of a lawsuit beyond the fines. We also want to make sure that we meet the timeline because if, missing the timeline will put us on a, on a four-year cycle again. The city of San Clemente is currently on a four-year cycle due to other litigation in the past, but once we resolve this, our goal is to get this housing element by the deadline, adopted by the deadline, so that would put you back on an eight-year cycle. So those are, those are some of the key implications of repercussions if you, if we don't have a housing element that complies state law on time. So, next slide. So the, the major changes compared to the housing element that you currently have is certainly we updated the demographic and housing data. We, we are using the American Community Survey data right now. That's, that's, you know, as data is being provided, we're using the ACS, which is more updated than the current housing element. I believe we was using 2010 census and some older ACS data. Then there are discussions in the housing element that would have completely revised to address new state laws. Between 2017 and 2019, or 2020, there've been a lot of new state laws passed relating to housing element and housing in, in general. And so the housing element has been updated to reflect these changes. The major change is how adequate sites is, how do you demonstrate adequate sites in the, in the state law, of what constitute adequate sites? And we'll go into that a little bit later. There are also laws that govern ADUs and how, how, what we need to do to facilitate the development of ADUs and also laws relating to homelessness and special needs, not necessarily like providing the housing, but make sure that your zoning codes are advised to address the provision of, of housing for special needs and the homelessness. So in respecting all these new state laws, we have added new programs in the housing element, specifically the rezoning for, that we would need to accommodate your regional housing needs allocation, the program that we're required to do to facilitate ADUs, the zoning revisions that we needed to, to accommodate special needs housing. And then there is a new component, affirmatively furthering fair housing, that's a pretty hot topic at the state level right now that we have to deal with. So we also adjusted the level of commitments in the quantify objectives that we mentioned before. That's based more on your past performance and, and, and limited resources that you may have. So, next slide. So kind of going back to the, to the regional housing needs allocation and it would, it would give you some, you kind of refresh your memory of how, how we have to accommodate the Rena with some rezoning. The regional housing needs allocation, the whole process is mandated by the state. The state HCD comes up with an overall growth projection for this state for the next eight, 10 years. I think their growth projection is about three and a half million new units statewide. And Southern California Association of Governments being the, the biggest, like, region in the state has a lion's share of that three and a half million units. We get allocated a 1.34 million units. And Orange County got 183,000 units, close to 184,000 units. So now, San Clemente's number, it's 800, 982, it's more than you had before, but, but compared to your neighbors is quite comparable or actually lower. Even that, you're quite built out as a community. So we will have, we still have to find ways to accommodate the regional housing needs allocation. Your Rena is divided into income categories, very low, low, moderate, and above moderate income. Now, that is not necessarily to say that you have to build the units for these income distribution because as a local jurisdiction, you don't build units. What you do is to make sure that your land use policies and your development standards and all of that are, are in place and that you can accommodate housing generally in these income distribution. For very low and low income, the state has established a default density as a proxy for being feasible to facilitate lower income development. And that's 30 units to the acre for, for your city. So that default density is essentially saying that at this density is more financially feasible for a nonprofit or anybody to build affordable housing with a reasonable amount of subsidies. It's not suggesting that affordable housing built at this density would not require subsidies that it can be built at market and it would be affordable, but it's suggesting that at 30 units to the acre or higher, you can facilitate low-income housing development with a reasonable amount of subsidy. So it's, it's possible for a nonprofit to pencil out with the funding sources that they, 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 they need to pursue. So, next slide. So with the regional housing needs allocation, we are able to, we're allowed to use accessory dwelling units, ADUs, to fulfill part of your, your regional housing needs allocation. For ADUs though, we're not allowed to use capacity. So we cannot say that because the city has 1,000 single-family lots that can have ADUs, you can have 1,000 potential units. That's not how ADUs would be counted. We can only count it based on trend between 2018 and 2020, when the law has changed. Significant law changes on ADUs in 2018. So between 2018 and 2020, what is your historical trend in facilitating ADU? And, and so therefore, how do you project into the future, the eight years that you can, you can, you can achieve? So based on historical trends, we think that new 20 units a year is, is reasonable. And the SCAC actually did a, an affordability study for ADUs in the SCAC region. They did rent surveys and they got HCD to accept the potential income distribution of, of the ADUs, which is very, which basically allows jurisdictions to count a majority of the ADUs being affordable to lower-income households based on that study that has been already approved by the state. And so with the 160 units of ADUs, we, we can get more than 150 units to be on the lower moderate income units. So with that, we still have to identify sites that available currently. And there are some vacant and underutilized sites that we, we think still available in the city and based on your, your mixed use and affordable housing overlay. And we can get some units from the, from those vacant and underutilized sites. But that's definitely not enough to meet the regional housing needs allocation. So staff worked on identifying additional sites and certainly have presented that before the public and before the planning commission, city council, where the candidate sites for rezoning can occur. And those would get up capacity for 1,243 units at, at a, if all the sites are being rezoned. Now, this is the, the candidate sites. You have three years to complete the rezon program. So at the time when you're actually doing the rezoning, the, the, the commitment is that you must, you must rezone at a minimum that you would be able to meet your regional housing needs allocation. But out of those sites that are proposed or identified as candidate sites, not, maybe not all the sites would be rezoned as you are going through the rezon program in the next three years. Next slide. So we're just going to go through some of these. We're not going to go into details about these sites because you've seen them before. We've done some revisions based on public comments. And, and so essentially, there are a total of 53 parcels that have identified for rezoned. And, and some of them are pretty small, but we, we need to consolidate them into larger properties. Anything that's less than half an acre is presumed to be not feasible unless they're, they're, they're located in a adjacent to each other and makes sense to consolidate. And so we have, actually, we have a total of 53 vacant and underutilized sites currently in your, that are currently appropriately zoned for housing. And that can accommodate 320 units. But we have also identified 2021 rezon sites as candidate sites that would accommodate additional housing. Again, we, we're not anticipating, the city is not, I would say obligated to rezone all of them. And as you go through the rezon program, you have to meet the minimum rezon required. But these are all candidate sites that you can consider in the future. Next slide. And so the, the maps showing the green sites are the sites that are currently zoned. The, the red sites are the candidate sites for rezon. So we, it's located throughout different parts of the city. And I think that's what city staff try to do so that it's not focused in, in, in just one area. Next slide, because we're not going to. And these are not necessarily very different from what you've seen in the past, what you've been presented in the past. Next slide. So in terms of programs, I, most of the programs, existing programs in the housing element, we might have modified that a little bit just to update the information. There are some new programs, one adequate sites and, and monitoring for no net loss. Providing adequate sites has always been a requirement for the housing element. Why we say that is new is because there is a monitoring component as required by state law, SB 166, that was approved in 2017. And so that requirement is that on an ongoing basis, as housing is being developed on, in the city, you have to make sure that you have remaining sites to meet your remaining Rena for all income categories. So for example, if you keep, if, if, if the, if the developers keep coming back with a proposal that's substantially below the density that we have assumed in the, in the housing element, the, the unit count that we have assumed in the housing element, or that there is not enough affordable unit produced, there needs to be enough of a buffer that, because the sites have been used up, developed, and you got market rate housing on it. And, and so we need to make sure that adequate sites is remaining to fulfill your remaining lower-income Rena. You, you may not have a lot of development proposal for lower-income development to come in the city, but the, the capacity needs to be there should there be a project for affordable. So you cannot use up all your sites for upper-income luxury condos or apartments and leave no room for affordable housing, regional housing needs. And leave no room for affordable housing, um, uh, regional housing allocation. So the, the monitoring of no net loss on a continuous base basis is a new requirement of state law. By right approval of projects with twenty percent affordable units, that's also new. And um, any sites that uh, we use um, from the previous housing element. Um, the fifth cycle housing element, that sites that we set that, the three hundred and twenty units that we mentioned before, the sites that we're reusing. Um, and the sites that you're rezoning to, to accommodate your arena. Those are subject to by right approval if the project meets twenty percent uh, comes in with twenty percent affordable units. That's a new state law. Um, uh, that's um, also uh, AB thirteen ninety-seven in twenty seventeen. The other programs are generally the same except for um, accessory dwelling units. That's a new program required by state law that. You know, we, we're allowed to, to use ADUs to fulfill part of your regional housing needs allocation. But uh, but you also need to have a program to uh, facilitate the development of ADUs in your community. Next slide. Um, affirmatively further had, furthering fair housing is um, an, a new state law as well. Um, it was um, again adopted in uh, passed in twenty seventeen. And essentially it wants the city to make sure that it um, it um, the, the housing. New housing production is not focused in, in one area and that you. Uh, if you have housing, new housing in, in areas that consider low resources. Then you have uh, strategies or improvement plans to, to improve the quality of those neighborhoods. Um, you also want to um, how do, um, have programs and policies and actions in place to mitigate. Gentrification displacement of existing residents and so to stabilize existing neighborhoods. Um, this is a really um, um, kind of important um, new requirement. And um, the state just last week um, issued a um. Uh, a ninety-five, ninety-four page guidance on how to fulfill this requirement. We have this discussion right now, but um, based on the new guidance that was just released last week. We may end up having to make some additional revisions to, to the, to the housing element um, when it goes up to the state. Um, zoning ordinance amendments, um, it, you currently in your housing element does have the same program, but it's dealing with different types of. Um, um, amendments. In this um, housing element, we have uh, new state laws that we have to deal with. So this particular program addresses the new state laws regarding um, um, um. Low barrier, low barrier navigation center, um, uh, parking standards for emergency shelters, um, supportive housing. Uh, and those are the key requirements um, of new state law for zoning code changes. So those are the. Um, the, 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 those are the new statements, uh, programs. Other than that, they're, they're generally the same as um, what you currently have. Because you have a relatively recent housing element that was done in twenty seventeen. So, uh, next slide. So um, here is the summary of quantified objectives. Um, the, the, your regional housing needs allocation is nine hundred and eighty-two units. Um, and in ADU construction, I basically um, mirror what we project in, from a trend. Uh, because if we're using that to, as, we're using historical trend to project into the future. Then we should be um, that the goal should be to meet that projected trend. And so that would be the quantified objectives for your ADU. For new construction, recognizing that it's extremely ex- uh, expensive to build affordable housing. I basically take about a twenty-five percent of the, of the arena. Um, uh, hopefully that would be. Um, most communities, um, I would say um, uh, are able to meet about fifteen to twenty percent of the affordable housing. Um, um, of the arena in the past, uh, but in the future that may be um, changing a little bit because of the by right approval. And also because um, the city does have an, and uh, an affordable housing overlay and mixed use overlay that, that kind of. Uh, helps you with affordable housing. So where, we, we set the um, the lower income arena to, to be um. Just about twenty, twenty-something to thirty percent of the overall arena requirement. For moderate and above moderate, we set it higher, of course, because um, in general, housing produced in the market would be. Uh, would be just affordable to moderate and above moderate income. Um, rehabilitation is based on your current uh, program accomplishments for your rehabilitation loan program. Um, in terms of preservation, you only have one project that has six units that are at risk of converting to market rate housing. So the preservation objectives is only six units. Next slide. Oh, okay. Um, so I guess um, that's the end of the presentation and I'll be happy to answer any question.
Thank you Veronica. And Chair, if I may, um, I, I realize that staff did not set the table. Um, for this discussion tonight. So I do want to thank Veronica for that presentation and then also let the planning commissioners know. Um, that this evening we're here to look at the first iteration of the draft housing element. Um, we're here to get your feedback, I answer questions. And this would be incorporated into the next version of the housing element. Along with uh, public comments and comments from the city council. Who would be reviewing this uh, draft housing element on May eighteenth. Thank you.
Thank you Jennifer. Um, and so I will open it up for questions and I will uh, for staff and the consultant, I'll just remind people too. That uh, in our discussion, we'll go through each um, section, each chapter. To make sure that we cover it with discussion and, and have an opportunity to provide our input to staff. So we can keep this section to, uh, to focus on the questions. So um, Commissioner Brown.
Yeah, first off, I'd like to welcome the Bronx team back to the panel here of the guys who have invited us to uh. The last cycle. Uh, in fact, we are in a fourth cycle. We were through, we, we did have our. Our permitting ability restricted for over a year. By the Orange County Shelter Coalition and we had to work our way through that. Along with many other e- efforts with HCD and so uh. This would be back to the corporate knowledge of our unique problems we have with the San Clemente and HCD. Overall, I think uh, your plan, you presented was very well balanced. Let you it twice. I provided staff some comments within the zoning issue. I think some of the uh. Efforts by Jennifer over the last year or so as far as uh, lot consolidation, some of the other actions we took. Hopefully have positioned us. Fairly good place going forward. I'd like to comment on where you think you sit now. Based on the efforts done by staff over the last year. The, we've done our ADU ordinance twice. Based on the state uh, law passing, we've uh, we're worked on uh, lot consolidation. We just went through an if, at least on the. Inclusionary fees or some of that stuff which I think kind of give it direction on, but I like. Your heading check and where we stand going forward now based on current state law and our ability to successfully.
And that, um, Christian Brown, is that a question for Jennifer? Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, I like, um, it was very difficult to hear at the last part of it because I'm, I'm hearing a lot of um, echoing. Or, or some, some background noise.
Hey Jennifer, you want to summarize it for me? You want me to try it again? Maybe I'll speak to that, right?
Yeah, yes, yes, Commissioner Brown. Uh, Veronica, Commissioner Brown was curious based on the work that the city has done over the past year or so. Updating the ADU ordinance and other programs, where we stand uh, comparative to the requirements and current law. Are we in a good position?
Um, yeah, I think you're in a good position. Uh, definitely the, the arena law, I think there, there may be still a little bit of. Um, like revisions here and there because the law has, you know, constantly changes. But I think, you know, definitely your, but, and, and we didn't actually use a very conservative, uh, we didn't use a very aggressive approach. Um, I think your current trend gives you to about a fifteen unit a year of historical trend. And we upped it to twenty, so you're not um, overly aggressive in um, in, in using ADUs uh, to meet your arena. Um, lot consolidation is very important, I, I think. Uh, but I did hear um, um, something. And, and I'm not sure whether I, I, Jennifer, we need to revise the housing element regarding the inclusionary fee situation. Um, the, the housing element was written in, uh, assuming that it was passed. Um. Um, so we do have to, may have to make some adjustments about that. But in terms of lot consolidation, I thought that was pretty impressive that you, you've done that um, in um, recently.
Well, the, the only other question I have, and I, I, I made some input to staff. Based on one of our study sessions on some of the zoning requirements and I passed it on to Jennifer. And I did a zoning uh, Google search of some of our areas which uh. I think uh, like the Lowe's shopping center area and the uh. Down at the other area where Staples was. Uh, were some of the areas I thought the commission on our last study session said maybe we should not venture that area for rezoning. And I don't know if that was passed to you or not, or whether that will affect our total number. Jennifer, you are ready to share that with the commission or with the consultant?
Yes, thank you. Uh, so what's not apparent on the map that was included in the consultant's presentation. Is the modifications that were made specifically for the Pico Plaza site. Uh, so staff did pass on the uh, comments from the planning commission from your last uh, session, looking at the housing sites inventory. And from that feedback, uh, the modifications that you'll find in the table showing the numbers that would, we, we would assume. Um, for our housing sites shows a reduced density. For those particular parcels, uh, remembering that the whole of Pico Plaza is split into smaller parcels. The uh, parcels that are closer to the existing residential uh, properties. They've been uh, reduced to a match the residential density of those existing residential properties. And then there's that higher density that was presented to you, um, relatively higher. Uh, uh, density presented to you at the last session. Those, that higher density has been moved along Pico, so away from the residential. What, what the commission could consider tonight is to fully take, uh, remove the residential. Units on those parcels that are closer uh, to the residential properties. In terms of the numbers, if I could just have the consultant confirm that even with those modifications. Um, we would still be in a good spot to uh, plan for uh, the housing units that are, would not be planned for. As ADUs or our existing sites. Is that correct?
Jimmy, if you can pull up your, your calculations, but um, the current numbers that we have presented, um, Jennifer's correct, we have reduced the numbers. Um, by reducing the density um. Of those, um, of the stretch of housing, um, sites that are cross um, existing residential. Now, if we remove those, I think we should still be okay. Um, um, I, we didn't do the calculation, but um, given the access that we have, we should be okay.
Good. For the rest of the commission, I, I, I did a Google search based on uh, the uh. Presentation by the staff of each of the parcels in. Pico Plaza and down uh, on the one off of where Staples was. Based on our, our study session, I did a, a Google search of each parcel number and address that was concluded in the search. And then I went back to the commission. I info Gabriel on it. You, Jim Ruhl, and I hope I, I couldn't find your city email, but your normal email and Jennifer to say. I thought from our, our study session, we would remove those sites, provide more buffer. In other words, these parcels that were in there. Were actually on top of, you know, Lowe's on top of, Michael's on top of Walmart. And I said, you should remove those and cluster everything down by Pico. And that's what we're talking about. And I tried to. I did a, like I say, an address search on every one of those that were presented in. And said, no, I think we intended for those to be, provide more buffer from the housing HOA above. Those and the same with uh, one down by Staples. We were scaling everything up to the freeway.
So Commissioner Brown.
Commercial sites and the parking, but still accommodate the, the affordable housing. That's where I was coming from. When I, I put this email out to staff and that's where I'm trying to encapsulate for the rest of the commissions.
So what, we can cover that when we get to that section of the plan during our. Um, during our planning commission discussion.
I'm just trying to set an umbrella here, Jim. For how long it can last and I'm, I'm really not, I'm really kind of sick around how long I'm not going to make this meeting. But I wanted to make an overall umbrella thing that I, of things that I did in preparation for the meeting and what I passed to staff. And to go, to go on to you. Thank you for your patience.
Okay, no, and thanks, Don. You know, we'll make sure, whether you're here or not, we'll make sure that we um. Uh, zoom in on that and, and make sure that we cover, we've covered that discussion and it reflects what it is we talked about last time. So, thanks. Uh, Commissioner Blackwell, questions?
Uh, yes, yes, yes. Thanks Jim. For Veronica. Um, Veronica, during your presentation, you, you mentioned ninety-four page document that came out this last week. And that you anticipated that we may need to be making some uh, plans or some, adding some new um. Information to our plan. Could you, do you recall or could you elaborate on any of the um. Changes that you anticipate making?
Um, the, the, we've actually done a, a pretty good assessment already. It's in the appendix C. Um, but based on the, the ninety-four page uh, uh, technical details. We, we anticipate having to actually um, like fine tuning some of the datas and analysis in, in appendix C. Um, and, and certainly, um, they've been um, also pretty meticulous about actions that the city would. Would pursue in terms of facilitating fair housing goals in the community. So we will um. We will have to probably um, beef up on some, what are the city's um, current actions? That uh, would be, would be um, considered as facilitating uh, fair housing in your community. So, um, I think. I don't anticipate policy changes, um, um, but I do anticipate um. Some additional um, programs that we may have to. Um, or actions that we may have to um, um, specify in the housing, what are the city's current actions? For example, your, your, your ability to um, you to um. Your willingness to resume um, for sites, uh, for housing and then um, distribute it throughout, you know, the community. That's an action. That's affirmatively furthering fair housing because it provides housing opportunities throughout the city, not in concentrated areas. Um, and certainly your um, your um, ability to um. Um. Uh, your lot consolidation efforts, um, it's pretty, um, um, like I said, it is, is, is a way to facilitate housing discussion. Now, this is the program twelve um, in the um, housing element that I've included. That's already quite extensive. Um, but. I, I, but HCD, the state seems to be wanting more specific actions about neighborhoods um, that we haven't been able to do yet. So we are going to actually go, go through this and see if we can um, be more specific about certain neighborhoods. Uh, improvements that, um, improvement plans that you're going to put in place and that you currently have um, in, in, um, in your housing element. I think that's a one focus that uh, we didn't anticipate them to have, um, but we've gotten comments um, from HCD regarding. Um, some housing elements that we've done in the San Diego region, which is ahead of your, your, your schedule. That they're looking for actions that are more geographically based. Um, like if, you know, are you going to improve certain neighborhoods? What are the programs and policies you have in place? If you're going to do outreach um, um, about fair housing, about affordable housing. Uh, would you um, um, do, step up your efforts in, in doing that in specific neighborhoods? So I anticipate that kind of fine tuning. Um, what we have in the housing element is quite extensive. Um, what we have in the housing element is quite extensive already. So I I would say that we're probably about eighty to ninety percent there.
Okay, great. Thank you. Appreciate your response.
Okay, uh Bart?
Yeah, um, one, I want to um say you did a very good job on for the public stating that we are looking at a policy document and um we are responding to mandates by the state. Uh, these aren't by choice necessarily. But um, you mentioned the thirty units per acre is something that the state has said is what they're trying to achieve, I guess. Is that correct?
Um, that's a default density for facilitating lower income units. Yes.
Okay, are we, just the lower income units? I'm I was just curious, we're adding um more sites like a commercial site that um uh currently has no residential units. Does that acreage get included in some kind of calculation where it adds the need for thirty units per acre? Or that site?
Well, yeah, we when we're doing the rezon rezoning, some sites are being identified for for higher density, some sites are for like moderate um medium density, because you do have the moderate income arena and the upper income arena that we also have to accommodate as well. Um, but yes, if we are um rezoning some um um non-residential um um sites and and then did you they do get the thirty units to the acre? And I I guess.
That's what I'm looking at. We've got a a finite number current currently of residential lots. And if all of those were thirty units to the acre, we'd meet these requirements currently. Would that be a correct assumption?
Hmm. The the I I guess I'm not quite understanding. We do need to do the rezon in order to meet the re-arena.
Yeah, I I I realize that.
Okay.
I guess I I'm just looking at if we keep adding more sites. Um, does the total re-arena number possibly go up because now we have more seats that?
Oh, okay. I I see what you're coming from.
Are we at risk of overdoing it so much that they will expect more?
Um, no, um, each round arena actually kind of um reset itself. At the end of the the eight-year period, the arena kind of reset itself and a new methodology and new projection is um going to come out. Now, I I cannot predict what methodology they're going to use or what um uh how much of the overall growth overall growth is going to be. Um, if you um, like, I've been involved in the housing element since the the third cycle. That's like dating myself a little bit, but um but the fourth cycle housing element um has a relatively large arena for a lot of um communities. Then when they're doing the fifth cycle arena, that's when we have the housing market implosion. When they were doing the projection, the housing market tanked. And that's the reason why the fifth cycle, the arena was 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 lower for for the majority of the state um and for the the whole SCAC region as well. So what your next arena is going to be is going to be dependent on the market condition at the time that they are doing the the arena projection. Usually, it's about two to three years ahead of the whole arena process. So we won't be able to predict whether it's going to go up or it's going to go down, but but being providing sites right now should not um necessarily have an impact on on what you currently have, because it is actually, uh, doesn't really look at that so much. It looks for this arena um process, the key factors for arena allocation is um um population that's located near public transportation um and proximity to jobs. Those are the two key factors that influence whether a city would get more um arena unit or not, and not necessarily about the current menus.
Okay, uh, you answered my question. The the concern I had was if we're taking commercial out of the picture and adding housing, we're taking um employment, jobs out of the equation that could have been there, which in turn means you need less housing also. Um, so it's kind of a catch twenty-two.
Right.
Um, but you also said that uh, I want to make sure I understood it correctly. Being that the general plan is the policy document, um, it can exceed the needs, but when we actually get into writing the ordinances and doing the precise work, which we have three years to do, um, we may not take advantage of, we may not need to take advantage of all the properties that are shown in the general plan, correct?
Correct. Um, and I want to point to the, if I can point to the precise language that I've written about the housing element. Um, I I think I put in a minimum um requirements, um, um, what you need to do in order to meet the arena. Um, to, I, yeah, if you look at program one, um, it's written in a way that you would do um a a minimum of how much to accommodate your shortfall. Um, and 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 certainly, the reason why we write this as candidate sites for rezoning is because they are just candidate sites. They are, they're they're not, um, some of them may drop off.
Right, yeah, I wanted just that discussed so the public uh fully understood that. And did you take into any consideration or would this be something that would be done during the implementation? Um, possibly looking at uh loosening height requirements and the FAR requirements in certain areas where height is not as much of an issue as it may be on other sites that would increase the density on those sites? Or did you just use existing um densities or anticipated densities for particular zones?
Uh, we use, um, yeah, um, we 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 can, we're only allowed to use uh what is the average development density, what 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 type of density um you've been experiencing in those zones as a way to estimate the potential. We didn't use the maximum density.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much.
Hey, uh, Commissioner Will?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Veronica, this um uh, I I think you're you're doing a great job here. This is a very comprehensive update of the housing element. So um, oh, I'm not here to criticizing or challenging anything, but I I just want to ask a few few questions so we all can get some clarification. And we're providing you comments for your incorporation in the refinement of the document. With that said, I will leave most of the comments where we go to section by section. Uh, at this moment, I ask you just one question. Um, the assumption you use eighty percent uh potential to come up with the number of units you can expect from a site. Um, first of all, I'd like to um clarify that this is my understanding that when we, what we call rezoning, rezone the commercial side, we're merely adding an overlay there. We're not changing the underlying zone. In other words, this commercial zone, they are commercially used, but housing can also be permitted. So they're not complete the rezone. If you complete a rezone it, it's going to become a residential use and a commercial won't be allowed. Now, with that in in mind, when you consider a commercial site that is already developed, is it reasonable to expect eighty percent of potential from that site?
Um, we, I I just said the thing that we are looking at is that they, you know, you could, how you're going to achieve that, um, whether you want to use an overlay. Um, it's also something that the city can decide on later on. Um, and but in terms of the average development density, um, we're using thirty units to the acre, well, no, thirty units to the acre and eighty percent of that. It doesn't necessarily mean that it, you know, in that the entire site, well, the entire site could, but in in most cases, and we've seen a a lot of commercial shopping centers and all that being redeveloped. Um, they take what um portions of the site and but they allow up to a certain number of units in there. And you have different ways to configure that, um, um, if you um to do that. We've seen a lot of shopping centers, um, I'll give an example, like um um in Redondo Beach, um, they did a a rebuilding of um of a shopping center that has the Bristol Farm in it. Uh, the Bristol Farm stays, um, and and the city was able to, the developer was able to use the parking area and put in um uh some condos and also a boutique hotel. Um, all the while, when 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 the when when the grocery shop, um, like um Bristol Farm was still functioning. So there are many ways that you it can happen. And and I think at this time, you know, we, it could be done as an overlay or it could be done as some, um, um, it can be rezoned, uh, portions of it could be completely rezoned. I think, I don't think that has been completely determined yet.
Yeah, you're right. So when 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 the development becomes essentially a mixed use, keeping the existing uh retail or commercial part of it, while you're using some unutilized, say, overparked, overparked area to to add some residential there. Um, you don't get that full potential based on the the acreage multiplied by the the by the density you assume. So, uh, you know, it seems like a a a few members of the public brought that to to in their comments. So I'd like to you adjust it.
Okay.
You know, whether we we should continue to use eighty percent for those lots. Apparently, if it's a vacant lot, it's it's practical, but if it's already developed as a commercial property and they are running okay or successfully, um, the possibility that um the whole commercial business go away and be replaced by residential. How much is the the feasibility? I think that can be reflected in your refinement.
Okay, um, we certainly, um, you know, we'll go to Jennifer later afterwards, and maybe we'll adjust some of the numbers that um as necessary.
Okay, by the way, I think Jennifer, um, can you confirm that the city is already set? That it's going to be an overlay, not a a uh rezone?
Uh, that that is the proposed uh mechanism, yes, that the commercial would stay and the housing would be an overlay to add an optional use.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and and I think if you look at table four dash five in the housing element, um, it's it is, um, most of the sites are indicated as an overlay.
Excellent. Uh, Commissioner Kozinski?
Uh, thank you. Um, Veronica, uh, thank you again for a very comprehensive report. It was very impressive to read. I do have uh one small question, I guess. I noticed that a lot of the rezoning proposed is is commercial and uh and and light industrial. Have you looked or are you planning to look in the future at uh rezoning or uh uh using the open space, the private-public or uh spaces within San Clemente in the future?
Um, we actually, I I think Jennifer is better to to answer that. I think we we actually removed some sites from that.
Yeah, thank you for the question. Uh, we we did note a couple of items uh in the staff report uh where there were some categories of properties that although they were suggested, um, they are not included on on the draft list. And one of those uh is those properties that are currently zoned open space. Um, it was, it was identified, at least staff heard um from public comments and the planning commission, that open space was probably not the the priority at this time. So we did consider those parcels. Uh, you will notice in the proposed housing sites list that you have in this draft, uh, we did remove some open space that was previously highlighted as a potential site. Uh, so again, I hope I hope that answers your question, um, that it was, it was just suggested uh based on the previous meeting and public comments not to pursue open space at this time.
And is there any um hurdle or uh protection for that open space to identify it in the future? Or is it, it can't be as easy as uh as switching out commercial to uh higher density housing?
That's correct. Uh, we do have in the city of San Clemente protections of open space through measure V uh where any change uh to non-open space use uh for an existing zoned open space parcel would require the vote uh of the community.
Got it. All right, thank you.
Thanks. Um, and I had a couple of questions um regarding the ADU housing elements. Um, I know we flag a certain number of those for low, very low, et cetera. I I'm just wondering how that, is there some enforcement mechanism um that we have for that? For instance, if, you know, we have ended up having, you know, thirty very low eight, um, thirty ADUs identified as very low. If five years later, are are we sure that they're still being used for very low income?
Um, that actually is not a requirement. Um, it's just based on estimate um that these units are presumed to be affordable. There's no deed restriction or or requirement that these be actually affordable. Um, and and so, um, so no, there's not going to be that kind of enforcement requirement because there um there's no deed restriction required.
Then then how do we track that? How do we know that's being rented like that?
Uh, you you don't, um, and you could actually, some cities do ask in the application form, uh, do you ask um the tenants or the owners to to um answer a few questions? But that's just, you know, whatever they're willing to disclose, um, what they intend to use the ADU for, um, if they intend to rent it out, uh, how much do they think they can charge? Um, uh, if it's going to be um occupied by uh family members uh at no cost. A lot of times, the state would um uh accept that definitely um um accept that um like housing that's uh occupied by by family members at at no rent as being affordable. Now, um, every single year, the city is supposed to report on how much housing you've built and certainly how many ADUs you've built. And the way that you would report on it is that, again, we do um kind of market rate um um and typically like a market rate analysis, like a a typical single family or or studio unit in the city is renting for about, you know, a thousand dollars. And that's affordable to um generally low income. And then ADU is similar to a studio unit and therefore is affordable. So the state is not very strict in how you are, um, how to count these units as being affordable or not. Um, so you you can continue to use the ADU um uh income survey or ADU affordability survey that's done by SCAC to do the approximation of whether the units are being affordable. Now, there are cities that are doing something different. Um, for example, they provide, um, um, the city of Culver City is going to provide fifty thousand dollars as a grant to a homeowner to build an ADU if they're willing to deed restrict the units for ten year, ten years as affordable. So then you can definitely know that those are affordable and they stayed affordable for ten years and they get the money. And so they're subject to the monitoring that you 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 may want to um impose on. But shy of providing that type of subsidies, um, you you don't have um the ability to monitor or restrict the rent.
So, ju-just so I understand, say the city builds a hundred ADUs in the next five years. We're essentially allowed to say X percentage of those are fulfill our very low arena numbers. X per Y percentage fulfills our low income arena numbers, et cetera. Correct?
Presumed to be because of the the survey done by by SCAC that was approved by the state. Yes.
So potentially, starting to lead to my next question, say we build a thousand ADUs. So that X percent is going to be a much larger number. Say we build a thousand ADUs, so that X percent is going to be a much larger number than if there were a hundred units. And if we look at that and say, okay, now we've built a thousand or two thousand ADUs. And, you know, we we're we've we're close to or we've made our, you know, very low or low numbers based on that calculation we're allowed to do. Um, is it, is it allowed and is it wise to then maybe uh unzone some areas for low-income housing that have been zoned? So within three years, we zone that. Five years, we say, oh, we built way more ADUs than we thought. So now we're going to change the zoning again and say some of these areas that we said are for low income, we don't need anymore because we're closer to our RENA numbers than we expected.
Okay. Um, that's gonna be, oh, oh, okay. I'm gonna give a relatively long answer to that.
Okay. And and it's okay to say that's a very unrealistic scenario.
Well, there are, well, there are a couple of reasons why it would not be um um the the best approach. Uh, one, um, the housing element law says that you need to provide a variety of housing types. And so you don't want to fulfill your RENA with just one housing type, which is the re- the ADU. So HCD doesn't want you to do that. So, but two, um, the um, when it comes to the RENA, RENA is considered to be a minimum, not a maximum. So you you it to to then downzone would be uh and so that no other housing can occur would would not be, uh, I don't think the state would accept that. Um, um, three, um, SB three thirty that was passed of of maybe about two years ago, two, three years ago. Um, SB three thirty holds cities um um capacity kind of as at a certain point that you you, well, it um it says that you cannot downzone your house. If you downzone housing from one site, then you need to help upzone it back in other locations. And it holds your your capacity at a bill uh at at least twenty eighteen. So I'm not sure how your your capacity would change um uh with this upzoning in some or rezoning some communities. And I'm not like, I I, yeah, I I think you may have to uh, I I'm not sure how it balances out with your SB three thirty. Um, presumably, you may be okay because you your twenty eighteen capacity is certainly lower than what you would have by after the rezoning. But um, but I'm not sure whether it's it's still okay to rezone downzone area and then um 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 you may end up having to rezone some area back. So that I that I have, I have to double check on the on the law. But SB three thirty is is another um, and it's another no-net loss uh law that governs the general plan. Um, it's not the housing element itself, but the whole general plan. So I have to check on that.
Okay, no worries.
I think it's not a a a good practice.
Yeah, I I got my answer. So I'm not asking you to do any further research or anything else. I appreciate that. Um. Uh, I I I also saw on one of your slides, you talked about buyright approval. Um, if you've got uh somebody who's building something and they do over twenty percent affordable housing units in there, they uh they get a buyright approval. Does that mean that they can bypass other, you know, the city standards like design guidelines or architectural overlay requirements, things like that?
No, I think they still have to meet the development standards in the city. But what it doesn't, it cannot have is that if you cannot have a regular review be at the, um, it would be, the review would be at the staff level or would be ministerial review at the staff level.
Okay, good.
And if Chair, if I I could just clarify, um, in terms of design standards, um, it's it's the objective standards that we would be able to apply. So subjective standards that are, it is compatible with the neighborhood. Um, that type of subjective standard, they would be able to bypass.
So our our guidelines are, you know, guidelines, you know, but if we say it has to be Spanish government revival or, you know, I'm thinking along a scenic corridor, for instance, um, or in a gateway area. Um, yeah, all right, all right, that's, you know, maybe that's something for discussion, but no, that's interesting that there that might be a way for them to avoid some um some overview on our deal. Um, all right, Commissioner Brown, you have another question?
No, I I I'm, I kind of told staff earlier that it's been fairly ill. So I'm, I'm gonna kind of check out here and go to bed. I'm sorry. Well, and I I communicated that with staff earlier. I think uh I think overall Veronica's done a great job from an overall standpoint and the safety review. I passed some stuff on to Jennifer like I'm missing. And this uh this she's gonna provide. So I thought the safety element was well done. I think overall the housing element is in the right direction. I don't have to kind of check out here because I'm pretty sick. So I want to compliment everybody. The effort we're at now and where we're going, I think, I I I'm heartened by Veronica's uh statement overall, there were about eighty percent there. I think I believe it's closer. Uh, I did read the uh the comments from the San Clemente Housing Coalition, and they're concerned about the element twelve and how it percolates through the rest. And hopefully through the rest of the evening, you will discuss all that. But I'm and Gabriel, uh, good luck. I guess you're leaving us. And Jennifer, you're going to the third floor, and I object to that, but there you go. And I'm gonna have to go check out because I'm really sick. But I can't prep all of this here, but I can go off this page. So thank you.
Okay, thanks, Don. Feel better. And we'll let the record reflect that Commissioner Brown left of the meeting at this point. Uh, are there any other questions for staff? Or the consultant? Okay, uh, if not, we'll move on to the public hearing. And I know we got some communications, so um I will open the public hearing. And uh Gabriel, well, I guess we'll do our standard. Um, you can read and and I'll be the three-minute timer.
Okay, um, so we're gonna split this up, Chairman, uh, between myself and and Jennifer. So I'll I'll read the first comments that I have. And uh, so I'll start now. Uh, this comment is from Denise Flurry. And uh, this is regarding the draft housing element. So uh, reads as follows, Dear Plank Commissioners, I am writing you today about the draft of the housing element that is before you tonight. The San Clemente Affordable Housing Coalition is an organization of individuals who are committed to improving the opportunity and choices for affordable homes in San Clemente for those who live and work in our city. Our team has had a chance to review this draft housing element. It would like to offer you feedback, recommendations, and requests for additional information in the form of a public comment. We appreciate your time in listening to our concerns. We realize this is a work in progress. The first part of our comments will focus largely on the site inventory and related RENA planning you have outlined to meet the city's obligations. The second part of our comments will briefly identify some other key housing element issues where we also have uh concerns, which we will be following up over the next two weeks. Two important requests upfront, please use a track change method as your team goes through its draft revisions. So content changes can be apparent to the reader. Can you provide us with electronic file of the site inventory? Examples, spreadsheets, so we may conduct our own analysis. We are requesting information, uh, confirmation from the city that it will allow a public review period of at least thirty days before any version of the revised housing element, either the draft housing element or final housing element is transmitted to uh HCD. The city should publicly announce the dates for the commencement and the end of the review period. Some general observations throughout the housing element, there is often a lack of detailed action plans with specific steps, metrics, timel- timeliness, milestones, accountability. This is one area where HCD has significantly increased expectations of the plan documentation. Two quick examples of the gaps are furthering fair affirmative housing, uh, plan for monitoring ADU compliance with income requirements over time. The site inventory lacks crucial information required by HCD such as documentation and analysis regarding the feasibility of building on non-vacant lots. Background, housing element annual progress report two thousand twenty. The two thousand twenty housing element annual progress report indicated that the San Clemente built sixty-eight very low-income units and twenty-eight low-income units in two thousand fourteen. No more units were built in the income tier since then, a period of over six years. There were seven ADUs uh two thousand twenty. Only thirty-nine moderate-income units were built. However, during that same period of the fifth cycle, above-moderate units were completed for two hundred fifty percent of the RENA target or five hundred fifty-nine homes. San Clemente continued to be built vigorously. It just didn't build affordable housing. This is a very unbalanced uh approach to the housing crisis overlooking a large constituency that lives and works in this in San Clemente.
And that's three minutes, Gabriel.
Okay, great. All right, that's the end, and I'll pass it on to Jennifer.
Thank you. Uh, the first comment is from Joseph Gordon. Dear Jennifer, I appreciated the opportunity to view these informative proceedings. As I had only recently obtained a cursory understanding of these matters, I felt compelled to learn more before and before any initiative on my part. Please know I listened carefully. Seems to me the guiding principle and simple thrust of this matter is improving lives. That is or should be the focus. But insight by elucidating upon humanistic perspective was missing in large part in favor of a walk in the weeds. Maybe not deep weeds, but weeds nonetheless. There were, however, moments of humanistic brilliance, like diamonds in the rough. They need a little more polishing, in my opinion. Consider the following. Concentrations of the impoverished and economically disadvantaged. We should learn from high-profile failures. While I refer to these anecdotally, this country experimented with concentrating certain groups, low income being one of the criteria. The motivations were well well-meant and altruistic, but as Sixty Minutes implied, it was hell on earth. A, these were colossal and abject failures, a blight that never really integrated into greater society. The social ills of so many living tenuously were a drain on law enforcement and the local social sa- safety net. Lack of caring neighbors with economic wherewithal in these socially stratified areas further hampered hampered living standards and integration. In retrospect, breaking up a large concentration into embedded smaller units dispersed throughout the community was the real solution. Our consultant should have known that and rejected this plan. B, while the lack of scale of these examples, concentrating the economically disadvantaged, like it or not, will stigmatize stigmatize the mini-community with derogatory terms like projects, the low-income housing development, et cetera. It potentially makes those residents feel even more disadvantaged and socially isolated. Their children will have less of a chance integrating with more socially mobile, economically advantaged plaintiffs. There are always problems when the elements of the community are more isolated while living under a gap gapping gaping wealth disparity with its attendant economic inequality. The proposal on the agenda for the overwhelmingly preponderance of low-income housing going below Lowe's Albertson's is insanity. It's not just ridiculous traffic or the unfair compromising circumstances foisted on a single community. It is the diminution of the joy of living in our community for these residents. The onerous eve- if even if unintended message, the congregating together of the economically disadvantaged in San Clemente is our version of economic segregation. It's honestly not, it's not honestly welcoming. Spatial dimension considerations or increasing densities are far less important than humanistic benefits and lifestyle realizations of residents now and in the future. Number two, your proposed plan, as now plotted, is ripe for redlining low-income housing. A, redlining practices exist, like it or not. A large concentration of low-income housing in a given area invites consideration of such practices. An example of this would be the eight hundred and eighty unit proposed.
Sorry, Jennifer, that's time.
Thank you. Next comment is from Kathy Estefani on the draft housing element. I am a member of the San Clemente Affordable Housing Coalition. We are a group of individuals and community organizations committed to advocating for San Clemente's adoption of policies which will actually produce affordable housing for our city's lower-income residents. Our coalition has been studying the draft housing element and has many suggestions for ways to make the draft stronger. Given my three-minute time constraint, I will mention just a few of these suggestions here. I begin with the suggestion that you add two key sites to the affordable housing site inventory. The first is ten acres of land comprising two parcels along Avenida Pico, which is owned by a local nonprofit, the Emergency Shelter Coalition. The city is well aware of this property because the city has a lawsuit against it for eminent domain for the express purpose of stopping the Emergency Shelter Coalition from building on it, either permanent supportive housing, emergency shelter for the homeless, or affordable housing for very low-income families. We urge the city to drop its eminent domain action and allow the Emergency Shelter Coalition construct the property the affordable housing our city so desperately needs. The Emergency Shelter Coalition property should be included in the site inventory as an affordable housing site. The same property should also become the new SB two zone for the city. As you know, an SB two zone is the is it the area in a city where an emergency shelter can be built as of right? The existing SB two zone is a business park which has consistently stated its adamant opposition to allowing an emergency shelter to open there. Given that opposition, it will be impossible for any nonprofit organization to open an emergency shelter in the current SB two zone. The city should designate the Emergency Shelter Coalition property as the new SB two zone because that site is a feasible site for such a use. The second site we urge the city to add to its affordable housing site inventory is the old city hall on Presidio. The city should designate that property as an opportunity site for affordable housing and include programs to facilitate that use, such as issuing an RFP for a one-hundred percent affordable project for lower-income households and donate the land to a nonprofit developer for that purpose. Another crucial step is for the city to strengthen its inclusionary housing program. The program should require fifteen percent of all new housing units be affordable for lower-income households. Alternatively, the city should allow developers to pay an annuity fee of at least ten thousand dollars per unit. Finally, in regards to homelessness, there are many actions the city should take to actually house the homeless rather than letting people suffer and die on the streets. For example, the city should create programs providing safe, non-congregate emergency shelters such as safe parking areas with bathroom and hygiene stations for families and individuals living in their cars. Of course, the real solution for homelessness is affordable housing. We urge the city to act boldly to create such housing. And that's the end of the comment. Next comment is from Linda Miller. Rezoning maps seem to be unreasonable. Why so many units? What kind of units are you planning to use, apartments or homes? Our schools are overcrowded right now. As a homeowner, I'm disappointed and not in favor of adding an any low-income housing. That's the end of that comment. The next comment is from Rona Henry uh in regards to the housing element update. Dear Planning Commission members, I write to you as a member of San the San Clemente Affordable Housing Coalition, a group of individuals working to ensure their affordable housing choices in the city with comments regarding the draft housing element. And in particular, the aspects related to the affirmatively furthering fair housing AFFH analysis and proposed program. We commend the city on its first draft as it relates to the AFFH analysis, considering it was only very recently that the California State Office of Housing and Community Development, HCD, issued its AFFH guidance. First, a process request. Please issue the site inventory in electronic format, uh, for example, as a spreadsheet, so we may conduct our own analysis. In reviewing program number twelve, the AFFH program, we believe that in general it should be strengthened to include more quantifiable metrics and timelines. We think there should be more specific goals incorporated with milestones during the sixth year cycle versus overall goals applicable to the whole cycle. The AFFH program refers to other programs to achieve its goals. This comment about metrics and milestones also relates to related programs. We would like to see more specific plans that help balance living patterns. Examples include an inclusionary housing program that is more robust than the current one. We recommend the policy require fifteen percent affordable units with five percent for extremely low income, five percent for very low income, and five percent for low income. We also recommend that the annuity fee be raised to ten to fifteen dollars per square foot so as to encourage the building of more affordable units that are integrated in with moderate-income housing. These figures are supported by the EPS analysis done for the city. Allocation of a larger percentage of vacant parcels to lower-income units on the site inventory. Right now, it appears that seventy-nine percent of the total vacant units listed on the site inventory are moderate versus twenty-one percent lower income. More housing voucher programs to access high-opportunity areas. Temporary replacement housing for tenants during redevelopment. Listed below are a few specific examples of how the AFFH plan could benefit by having more specific timeframes and or proactive approaches. Note, we offer these as illustrations, not a comprehensive list. AFFH Plan: Acquire and Convert Market Rate Housing to Affordable Housing, Program Ten. Program Ten Acquisition and Conversion of Market Rate Housing to Affordable Housing. Objectives: If approached by a nonprofit organization or affordable housing developer, work with the organization or developer to assist in purchasing a site to be used as traditional housing and or long-term permanent housing with the goal of increasing the affordable housing inventory by four hundred and forty-six lower-income units by two thousand twenty-nine. Comment: The city is waiting to be approached versus proactively seeking a partnership with an affordable housing developer. Comment: The city is waiting to be approached versus proactively seeking a partnership with an affordable housing developer. Work with code enforcement to evaluate substandard properties as opportunities for rehabilitation as affordable housing units. Comment: This objective lacks a specific timeframe.
Jennifer, that's our time for that.
Thank you. That's the final comment.
Hey, any more public comment? All right, then I will close the public hearing and we can start our commission discussion. What I'd like to do is, in order to kind of make sure we cover everything and also focus in on some things that staff wanted to make sure they got our perspective on. I think I'd like to start on the first, for the first three chapters. I'm just gonna ask if anyone's got any discussion or, or statements on each of those chapters, and then we'll get to chapter four, we'll do something a little bit different. So, starting with chapter one, anyone have any comments or discussion for that chapter? Okay, I don't see any. Chapter two, needs assessment, any comments or discussion? All right, I don't see any. So, chapter three.
Chair, I have some comments on chapter three.
On chapter three, very good. So, please go ahead, Commissioner Will.
Yes, it's on page twenty, page sixty, sixty-seven of the report, page seventy-five of the planning commission report. The sixty-seven of the housing unit. Three point three market constraints, there is a table illustrating a few examples of a recent transaction. I believe those information are not very accurate, and they need to be updated.
Can you provide staff a little more information? What, what do you, how do you feel they're not accurate or realistic?
I spoke with Jennifer about that. They, they, there are some factual omission, or they're, they're not very accurate. For example, the second transaction never happened. And then the first one was listed for that price, it was removed. So, there was no real transaction. And the third one was closed at a lower price.
That's, that's table three twelve?
Yes.
Okay, and the staff have any comment on that? Is that, is that something we need to update?
I think you, we, the consultant and staff will update that table.
Okay, great, thank you. Anything else on chapter three? Okay, very good. In chapter four, let's, if you don't mind, let's focus first on the housing list and map. I would just wanted to see, because I have a feeling if there's discussion, it's gonna be in those areas. So, if you've got any comments or anything on the map or the tables that discuss the zoning. Any comments on that? Let, let me start with, just to kind of stand in for Commissioner Brown. I know he sent the email, I actually saw it, but I haven't been able to find it, Gabriel. Maybe you can bring it up on your side. I don't know why I can't find it in my mailbox now. But I, he did have the question that he had regarding the zoning and zoning density in the, in the, I keep on saying via Pico, in the shopping center on Pico. So, I kind of wanted to open up and see if anyone had any kind of comments or further discussion beyond what we had two weeks ago on that area.
Are you talking about the Plaza, what I understand is Plaza Pacifica, that site?
Yeah. Oh, no, Jennifer's.
Is it, is it Pico Plaza or Plaza Pacifica?
I keep getting, because Pico Plaza is the one at the end of Pico, closer to North Beach.
Thank you.
So, and I believe Plaza Pacifica, then, where Walmart and Lowe's is. I believe that's the one he was referring to, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, Chairman Roland, you know, I know that was something that was being addressed earlier by Commissioner Brown. And from what I recall, it looks like if we were to pursue his recommendation of removing some of those parcels that are closer to the existing residential site. I know that was his recommendation. You know, one of the things that came up is, well, will we still be able to satisfy Rena? Do we still have enough in our inventory to satisfy that? And I believe our consultant Veronica Tim mentioned we would. So, I think it's worth some discussion from planning commission if they support that idea, recommend that that's something that is addressed in the housing element. Because at the last planning commission meeting that, where this was first brought up, I believe we were gonna keep the whole site. So, Jennifer, I don't know if you want to add anything more to that, but I think it's worth hearing from the rest of the planning commission support that idea that Commissioner Brown raised.
Gabriel, can I make a one extra point first? I think Commissioner Sue mentioned that he thinks that we need to adjust the the commercial area and not use a hundred percent of the sites. And so, in, if that is also in the consideration, I think both needs to be think, considered in conjunction. So, if we, if we remove the other sites and then if we reduce the capacity on the commercial site, then we may lose too much. So, I think that's something that we, we have to keep in mind.
And Commissioner Roland, just, I mean, Chairman Roland, something, you know, just some staff feedback on that. I think what was raised when this was first brought up, the planning commission meeting last, that, that maybe that residential would be infeasible on existing developed commercial parcels in that shopping center. But I think staff's opinion is that, you know, there, you know, there is the opportunity for potentially redevelopment, right? So, for example, if there's more trends towards, like, online sales and, and, you know, one of the retailers is no longer there and isn't replaced, then does it become an opportunity for, for new housing? Doesn't necessarily mean the whole site will be developed with housing, but there could be pockets even with existing developed areas. So, I think it could be feasible. But, you know, I think those are some of our thoughts. But if it's more of a concern about a buffer between the existing residential, then I think that's that, you know, that's another consideration that the planning commission may have, whether they want those parcels to be considered for future affordable housing.
I, for me, I'll put my two cents in on it, on that one. My biggest concern was how realistic it might be that, that, you know, parts of those existing retail areas, like the Walmart or the Lowe's or something like that, gets, you know, redone into some kind of housing. I think, you know, we talked about along Pico or in the, in the current, probably overparked parking lot, that, you know, those are gonna be easier places to put things into. But if staff feels that there is some reasonable possibility, a reasonable possibility that we would, you know, that that could happen, like you say, they're, you know, changing technologies and, you know, it just becomes more economically desirable to have some kind of mixed-use housing there. Then I'm, I'm, you know, I'm, I, then I don't doubt that. I don't wanna, I'm not sure I can second guess that, but I think it's, but that is my, you know, that was my my personal concern about having that area in the back where the current large stores are. I do think having, kind of making that a mixed-use area, you, you can sort of create a workforce housing for the commercial that's there, right there in that area as where, as well. So, it might have that kind of benefit. But, but that's my thought, is I'm, I'm okay with leaving it in. If staff is, feels like there is some, you know, realistic chance, doesn't have to be a big chance, but some realistic chance that that could get, could get changed over in some way, or redeveloped in some way. Commissioner Will, did you have something you want to add?
Yes, this side has, since staple has been closed for quite a while, this side has better opportunity to develop into some housing or mixed-use type of a project. And also by removing it, we're forcing ourselves into a corner. We lose the capacity and we'll concentrate much without housing needs onto the, the commercial strip mall along Pico, which is not a desire. So, I would say we should keep them on the list.
Commissioner Crennel?
Yeah, this is a question for both Jennifer and Veronica. General plans are policies, it's a policy document. And we've gotten very, very specific on some of these sections. Am I incorrect that, could we be a little more general when we say, consider this site as being such and such? And then during the implementation, we'll have three years to do the implementation of the actual zoning and whatnot. This document has to be approved, I believe she said October, before we're running a risk of penalties and violations and whatnot. So, I'm kind of in favor of leaving it because if we choose during the implementation process, we can make a probably better decision and spend more time on specific decisions to do the rezoning, etc. Is that a correct assumption, or is that pie in the sky? That's for Jennifer or Veronica.
Yeah, so you, you will see more specifics in the housing element because the HCD does require that. There is, there is a, there's part of it that's general, where it does say consider, especially in the sense of rezoning, it's, it's a program that would be implemented after adoption of the housing element. And part of that implementation would be consideration. You know, it may be that we determine later that this one particular site doesn't work, and maybe there's another site that does. So, we're not, we're not one hundred percent married to what's in the housing element, however, there.
That's what I wanted to hear.
Okay. However, there are some technical things that we do have to provide, namely, the quantified objectives. You might remember that as the last slide that the consultant presented, where we actually have to quantify that these are the potential number of housing units that we could plan for. That's the critical component that HCD wants to see, that there is actually some feasibility within our programs.
Very good. I wanted to just confirm that it's not totally cast in stone if we find alternatives that can better be suited to achieve the goal.
And, and just to clarify, kind of that, the process of this, we're still very much in draft. The final version, correct me if I'm wrong, staff, the final version will come back to the planning commission for review in August. And then, over the next three years, we'll be looking at zoning ordinances that bring our zoning in, into compliance with that, correct?
Correct.
Good, good. So, so what I'm hearing is people seem reasonably content with how those shopping centers are zoning, the proposed zoning for those, rezoning for those shopping centers at this time. Not a big objection, okay? Anything else with the map and the tables for the zoning that anyone wants to discuss? Commissioner Will?
Just a one minor correction. On the table four point five, targeted site with a typo, acreage is not accurate, and much bigger than one point six on the table. This may help our disqualification, by the way.
Is that row B that you're looking at?
That's right, yes.
Okay.
Thank you. We will correct that.
Okay, then if that is all of our discussion on that part of chapter four, I'll ask if anyone has any other comments or discussion on the other parts of chapter four. Commissioner Will?
Thank you, Chair. On the HE dash seventy-three page, regarding affordable housing overlay, I think the report should clarify that on the second, at the beginning of the second paragraph, it reads, in order to develop housing in these districts, fifty-one percent of the units must be affordable. I don't think that's the case, because in mixed-use area, we can still have market rate housing. Not all housing needs to be affordable project. Jennifer, can you clarify that?
Yeah, I think it would be helpful to take that paragraph into context of the heading. I know, I know it's confusing. We mentioned mixed-use in the previous paragraph, but the heading is in regards to the affordable housing overlay. And so, specifically for the overlay requires fifty-one percent of the units. So, Commissioner Wu, you make a good point that it shouldn't say in these districts for that fifty-one percent requirement, but rather in the overlay, in the affordable housing overlay.
Well, that's good. Doesn't answer my question. For example, MU three point two is mixed-use area, and it is in an overlay. And there's a project in Ten-Town, Santiago, they're all market rate housing.
Right, correct. So, if you have a mixed-use project, you're not subject to that fifty-one percent. It's only if you're in the affordable housing overlay and you want to do a fully residential project, do you have to meet that fifty-one percent affordable?
Okay, fully residential project, okay. Maybe you can clarify it by, by, by changing the word.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. And then, another minor thing is on page HE dash ninety, item four point two point one, inclusionary housing in loop found in the middle of the paragraph, it says, the city collects and includes for projects unable to provide on-site affordable units. I think the reality is, the city provide, the city collects a new fee as an, as an option to provide on-site affordable unit, because no one needs to prove that they cannot provide on-site. They can always pay a new fee, what is happening now.
Okay, yes, we, we can take a look at that language and clarify that. I think the, the, I think the intent of that is maybe to, maybe to explain that those smaller projects, perhaps those of six or seven units, from a feasibility standpoint, wouldn't necessarily provide them on-site. But you're, you're absolutely correct that the fee is an option.
Okay, thank you. I had one more comment, and I, you know, I don't know, I don't, this may be open a can of worms or something, but, or maybe it's not, just not something we can do. But my question earlier regarding the concern about when you've got a, an affordable housing project with over twenty percent affordable housing, and that they can do that by right, and that might allow them to ignore certain of our design standards and such. I'm wondering, and I would hate to do this, but I'm wondering if, in order to preserve our design standards, if it's possible or desirable to say that in certain areas like scenic corridors, like existing architectural overlays, that we cap the affordable housing project at twenty percent so that that nondiscretionary approach doesn't kick in. Now, the only reason for that is to, is to, you know, Is to, you know, preserve, it's not to suppress the fact, you know, of having fifty percent. It's to it's to preserve the aesthetics of the city. So maybe the um uh uh Jennifer or or one of the consultants can. Has an opinion about this, but I'm also interested in if. So it might not be even be feasible, but but if it is, then maybe other commissioners would have an opinion on it as well.
Yeah, and I will ask Veronica to jump in if I say this incorrectly. Um but what I understand your question to be is can you? Limit the the affordable unit percentage so someone can't qualify for that twenty percent by right?
Right, say say in uh uh an SCR over architectural overlay area or the gateway area. Because we want to make sure that we preserve the the architectural integrity or of of the area, something like that. Um you you know, I I don't want it to be like an end around. I just want to preserve the that architectural integrity. I don't mind if there would be a higher percentage of affordable units in that area. But maybe it's not even possible uh with state law. I don't know.
Yeah, so there's two things. The first one is where I might need Veronica um to jump in. And the first thing is is that um you want to be careful about limiting the number of units comparative to what's allowed now. Um and then you also want to take into consideration uh that there are some um potential state laws that. Would allow automatic approvals even without our overlay that allows the twenty percent by right. Veronica, do you want to expand on that?
Yeah, and and I would definitely um say that if. Uh 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 if I'd be so bold to to predict what a city is going to react to that, um they're probably not um. Not um. Would not approve it because um I don't think as. For example, um as the local jurisdiction, your zoning. Um power is essentially gives you the ability to regulate the use. The use is a high-density multifamily. Um it doesn't give you the power to regulate who's going to occupy in those units, for example, income households. Um so they that that's a fair housing discussions about. Regulating the use versus the user. And 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 so when you preclude a certain amount, like you say, no more affordable housing than than ten percent or nineteen percent. So that you're just below the twenty percent. That would be considered circumventing state law and I think um you you would be in a more um. Uh it'll be more risky um kind of policy to 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 to. You may want to consider doing the other thing um is to. You know, look at your your design standards and maybe um, you know. Revising it so that it's objective, but still meet your standards. Um um what your objective. So that would be probably a a more um proactive approach. Well, and and positive approach rather than a a a kind of preventative kind of approach, so.
And that's.
I'm sorry, I was gonna say, I I actually like the idea. We should be updating our design standards, you know, anyway. Um i- is there a way that we should or could? Uh uh drive that through the housing element? Like like part of what we're going to do as our housing element is update our design standards. So we have some more objective standards for SCR, for instance, things like that.
Yeah, and that's the objective. Objective design standards is the second point I wanted to make um in terms of your question. Uh so we do have, um because we were in compliance with our housing element. We were able to qualify for some grant funds that we do have set aside to uh. Establish objective design standards. Uh that would not happen until twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, just based on the grant funds. But even without that, um we are relatively in a good spot. Um for a lot of our parcels based on um primarily those parcels that are required to comply with, say, the Henry Lenny Design Guidelines. If you look through that document, um it's not completely objective, but there are a lot of components that are objective. Where they um provide specific um pictures or images of what the architecture looks like. So someone would be able to go in and say, okay, my roof is going to look this way. My eve detail is going to look this way. Um so there, we do have um some uh protection, if you will, in place to the aesthetic designs. But of uh of the city, but of course, that doesn't cover every property.
Okay, it would you recommend putting something uh or recommend against putting something into the housing element? That says you should you should create more objective design standards to protect against this instance? So I thumbs up, so good. So that's that's the recommendation. Okay, then then that's. That's something that I'm going to suggest and and hope the um other commissioners. Agree that that this is something that we might want to see um in the housing element as a statement to that effect. To push us in that direction and give us some protection.
Chairman Rullen, uh you will have a study session coming up in in June. Regarding objective design standards to kind of get the ball rolling on this discussion. And so uh so my my understanding, we're going to have a place works uh a planning consulting firm that will. Present that to the planning commission in June, so so they'll look forward to.
Okay, uh Commissioner Wu?
Yeah, Chair, Chair Rulli, certainly I would support that. Um with a debate. Tightening the screw and then taking away local control over over the last couple of year or even over the last, you know. Two or one decades. Um it's concerning that we're losing control, so. Objective design standard is whether we have it in the housing element or not, it's required by state law nowadays. Um especially if we want to retain control. Unfortunately, it cannot be discretionary anymore. That's how state look at it and they want to facilitate those housing development. So we have to do that, that the objective design standard. Now what this is something that the planning commission can help the staff to to establish down the line.
Okay, great. So um I assume if I don't say anyone, anyone else go off mute, I assume everyone else is okay with having staff add that. And and that's a direction we can give to staff. Okay, anything else on chapter four? All right, so on chapter five, what I'd like to do is um. Uh I'm just gonna go and ask for each program. Uh there's ten programs in here. I'm gonna ask for each program if anyone has any uh comments or discussion on them. And we can hit that program by program. Um so program run, um program one, provide adequate sites and monitoring. Any? Any discussion? Okay, program two, by right approval. Any discussion? Program three, lot consolidation. Program four, density bonus. Program five, affordable housing overlay. Program six, inclusionary housing program. Program seven, affordable housing development. Program eight, ADUs. Program nine, pursue funding sources and programs. And program ten, acquisition and conversion of market rate house. Okay, um any uh discussion on the remainder of chapter five?
Uh Chair, do you want to uh perhaps ask if there's any comments on programs eleven through seventeen?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I meant to do that. I I hit a new section and I thought I was my my apologies. Um any comments on a discussion on program eleven? Sustainable process policies. Uh let's see, program twelve, affirmatively funding fair housing. Commissioner Crandall?
Uh yeah, I had basically done fourteen. We didn't address. I don't think it addresses parking.
I'm sorry, which one are you on right now?
Fourteen.
Oh, program fourteen?
Yeah.
Okay, well, let me just ask twelve and thirteen, any discussions on those first? Okay, yeah, please. So uh uh parking on program fourteen?
Yeah, I'm thinking, you know, if you it's probably the state at this point doesn't care. But I think it'd be a good time to get in there that we should look at um. Alternatives to parking limitations and uh. Parking lot design. That would certainly uh enhance the possibility to uh get more multifamily. Um in some of the low-cost multifamily, I've been noticing some articles and things on. Allowing tandem parking in parking lots. Uh for multifamily and that reduces a lot of the out the circulation lanes. So it would just be kind of a proactive comment to uh. Consider that. I don't think it's necessary for getting the state's approval of this. A particular document, but uh. It would be good and it's probably time for us to start relooking at the parking again.
Good point. Anything else on program fourteen? Program fifteen, monitoring of emergency shelter overlay. Program sixteen, neighborhood revitalization. And program seventeen, preserve at-risk housing.
Chair, if I, sorry, I I didn't realize this is commissioner comments. I just wanted to give an update on the preservation of at-risk housing. Uh the consultant Veronica mentioned earlier that there is a six-unit development that's at risk of um. Going to market rate housing uh during this planning cycle. Uh and we have already begun conversations with the operator uh of those six units uh to discuss options to. Uh maintaining those units as affordable. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so that's chapter five. Um there's a a couple of appendices. So I'll just ask generally, does anyone have any discussion on any of the any of the appendices? Okay, I don't see any. So uh my question for staff and the consult, well, let me let me before I. See if they've got what they need. Let me just ask one more time, does anyone have anything else they'd like to discuss? About this draft housing element? Okay, Jennifer, Veronica, Jamie, do you have the information that you need from us? Do you need us to clarify anything or discuss anything else?
I I think we have a good amount of information to go by, um some corrections to the housing element text. Um some additions to programs. Uh and then also some modifications, uh at least considerations to modify that the housing sites list.
Okay, well, very good. And I I know I'm repeating people, but you know, well done. Good job on this. I know we've had many, many meetings on various pieces of this and it's nice to see it all uh coming together like this. And it'll be nice to, my time on the planning commission, we've always struggled with the uh. The most recent one with getting the housing elements done on time. So it'd be great to hit a a nice eight-year cycle instead of a four-year cycle for a change. So um um so good luck and thank you very much. So that uh that's our discussion on that item tonight.
Chair, yeah. Can I ask you to uh ask other commissioners if they have any comments on safety elements?
On the safety element?
Yes.
Of the general of the of the general plan?
Yes.
Uh that's a little out of, it's not on the agenda tonight. I'm a little hesitant. Yes, Jennifer?
Yeah, and and I'm sorry, again, I did a very poor job in setting up uh the background. Uh as part of the state law, uh when we're updating the housing element. Um we do have to update the safety element. Um and so you will see um some proposed revisions to the the safety element of the general plan. And that's included as attachment two in your packet. Uh you'll notice that there are red lines, however, they're blue, not red, um but it shows where the edits are. Um these are largely technical in nature, um really complying with state law. Um there is a a large proposed change under the fire section. Uh and this draft uh safety element will go to CAL FIRE for review to the state. Um they are looking specifically to make sure that we are addressing very high. Fire hazard severity zones. Uh and so you'll see some additional policies on that and just making sure that we're um considering where we're putting structures. And maintaining fire safety uh in those areas. You'll also see some updates in regards to um climate change. And those are largely referencing the work um that we've done on uh the. Uh resiliency plan as well as the sea level rise vulnerability assessment that you saw in the past year or so. Past couple of years. Uh and then lastly of note in the draft safety element, uh there's also. Um some comments about references to our local hazard mitigation plan. Um and you might hear that come up um as we are uh the city's looking to update our um plan from that perspective.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Blackwell, did you have uh? Some discussion on that?
No, I didn't. I I took my soap off, you know, I was just rolling with you on the conclusion.
All right, no worries. All right, thank you, Jennifer. Does anyone else have any discussion they want to have on that portion of it? Okay. All right, very good. Well, thank you again and um uh. We'll move on to. Item ten, old business, we have none. Item eleven, um reports of commissioners and staff. And I think uh Gabriel and Jennifer um, you know, have a announcement of their. The change in their status coming up, so.
Yeah.
So let us know about that.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman and planning commissioners. Um so one of the announcements I want to make um is that Jennifer Savage. Uh who is presenting on our housing element today. Uh she she is is uh now working out of the city manager's office and providing support. The city manager's office and uh Jennifer, if you're still on the on the on the call. And maybe you can talk about some of the work that uh you may be doing. Um so it's a it's a big loss for planning because, you know, Jennifer is a great. Uh senior planner and she knows our long-range planning program really well. She's really uh. Provided the leadership to get us up to speed on our long-range uh planning program. Uh so it's 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 really tough to to lose Jennifer, uh but she's still here at the city. And uh and so right now, that uh position right now. Um is is, I I guess essentially vacant right now for for planning. Jennifer will still continue to work on the housing element. And she recently finished up some of the work on the inclusionary housing program. So that will continue with Jennifer. So fortunately for planning, she will continue to do that because she has. Um a lot of the knowledge and she's been working on that program already, so. I don't know, Jennifer, you want to maybe mention uh what you might be working on in the city manager's office?
Uh thank you, yeah. So to maintain continuity, certainly. Um I will continue to manage the housing element update along with our consultants. Uh in addition to that, I will be helping uh assisting the the city manager um with some legislation. Uh and some other special projects uh as they come up.
Well, congratulations and and thank you for, thank you for the work you've done and for staying on to finish to finish this job. And we need to tell the city manager's office to stop poaching planners, city planners. Because we're losing all of our good planners to the uh to the city manager's office, so.
What was that? I think Commissioner Wu was saying something.
I said he did it twice, first to Jonathan, then Jennifer.
Yeah, I have one more announcement and some of you know this already. But this will be my last planning commission meeting with with the city. And so uh my last week with the city will be this week, uh last day on Friday. And I I will be taking on a a new opportunity. Um for uh myself and. for myself in, in a, in the city I used to work for, for nine years, about eight years ago, on the city of Coachella. And, and so, you know, I accepted an offer for Assistant Community Development Director over there. And so, you know, obviously want to let the Plan Commission know about that, because I serve as a secretary to the Plan Commission. And, and so the, the, the work will definitely continue. I, I know in my absence as a city planner for the city, that, you know, there is no plan to fill that position at this point, but Cecilia, our daily, our Community Development Director will be filling out the Plan Commission meetings in, in my capacity. And she will also be continuing with some of the city planner roles, you know, day-to-day at the city, so I just want to let you know about that. But it is hard to leave. I have learned a lot from the Plan Commission. You might recall, there was an email I sent to the Plan Commissioners about old photographs, I think maybe from the eighties of San Clemente, the commercial zones. And, you know, looking at those photographs and just seeing the big difference that has occurred over time with some of the new development, or, or actually the revitalization of some of those buildings. And it's made a big difference in the city. And so the importance of the Plan Commission, you know, the attention to detail that you have to design and really caring about how all these pieces really fit in the city has really made a difference over time. And so, you know, what you would see in the city, you know, in the nineteen eighties is really unrecognizable today, and, and the quality of the design, you know, is definitely impressive compared to those photographs that I sent to the Plan Commission. So I learned a lot from you in terms of that attention to detail and, and the level of care you put into reviewing your projects and the questions that we get. So I, I really do appreciate that and working with each of you, you know, and I know I mentioned that Jennifer will be working in the City Manager's Office, we did with Jonathan, so there is quite a bit of a challenge in the Plank Division. You know, you know, we have great employees in the Plank Division, so, you know, Stephanie, Kyle, Chris, Katie, David Corio, Lisa Acosta, and Meredith Scott, I mean, they, they, they do a lot for the, for, for the city. And, and so right now, we're in this position, I think, where we, we've been having to concentrate a lot of our efforts in current planning applications and, and have not been able to do a lot on the long-range program. And so we, we are shifting some efforts. We were working on our second phase of the batch amendments. But I know there were some concern about us being able to continue with the specific plan updates. So we are going to put that Phase Two batch amendments aside for the, for the moment, since that may not be the highest priority. And we'll pursue those specific plan updates again. So I know Chris is going to kind of lead up that effort. You know, as soon as I, I'm gone. So, you know, one of the things I just wanted to bring your attention to, you know, I know we, you know, we get comments that, hey, we should be focusing this on that, but, you know, I think the planners are really doing their best with the resources that they do have. And, you know, I really appreciate really what they do for the city. And and, you know, that's about it. So I, I just want to thank you again. You know, if there's anything you need from me before I leave, I'm gone on Friday at five thirty, and so I know I've spoken to some of you already about, you know, the departure or just transition plans. And so if you want to talk about anything, feel free to give me a call, and thank you again.
Well, thanks, Gabriel. I'm, I'm sorry to see you go. I mean, I think, you know, you and I have worked, you know, well together while I've been chair, and, and you know, I like how you've helped to move a lot of things through, and I, and I, I appreciate that. It's been it feels like a partnership, and so it's unfortunate when that ends. But I'm, I'm glad it sounds like a move up, and that's, that's wonderful. I think I, I think you're right about staff, and the time I've been on the Planning Commission, I've learned just, you know, what a variety and load of, of work that they do. And I appreciate you, you know, taking that forward for the last couple of years. And as you look at the city, you know, when you drive through in the future, you can know that you're part of that arc of improvement and beautification and livability that we have in that, in, in the city. You can, I hope you feel like you're, you know, you're part of that timeline, a piece of that puzzle that has gotten us from there to here. So thank you very much for that.
Yeah. Jim, if I can add. I, I am so grateful to have this, this gentleman and this woman working with us. These are two excellent planners. I, I work as, as a planner privately. And, and I've worked with hundreds of planners all over the state, all over the West, and I got to tell you that Gabriel's leadership, he came in, and I was a little, speaking straight to you, Gabriel. I was wondering, you know, you were coming from a non-beach city jurisdiction, and it's just different, as you know. And you jumped right in, and you handled it well. You're very thoughtful and orderly, and your progression through. You had some gigantic shoes to fill, literally and figuratively, I know. You know, but you, you, you did it, you know, you really did. You picked up the phone. When folks would call, you didn't know the answer, you, you, you didn't get it, you know, you, you did a good job, and you're going to be missed. And Jennifer, a great planner. Yeah, I, I share those thoughts, you know. We keep losing good planners, and it's, it's kind of painful, and another department takes our planners just out of reach, but it's good that you're still going to be connected to the housing. But just very impressed with two of you. You've done a great job, and Gabriel Coachella is lucky to get you back, because a lot of great things happening out there. I'm excited for you. You know, the city was kind of flatlined for a while, but a lot of growth out there, a lot of good things happening. So good for you, great career move, and we'll miss you. And like Jim said, everything that you've worked on, a part of you will remain here. And that's a great thing we do as, as planning commissioners and, and planners, we, you know, we put our thought and hearts into, you know, building community, and you know, every project that we have touched, part of us is there, and it's great to drive down the street and, and see that, you know, it, it should give us a lot of, you know, we should be, you know, we should be not only grateful, but, you know, be proud of ourselves for being a part of this and contributing to the city, and you should, you should too. So you will be missed. Stop by and say hello, come up to the podium as a civilian and say hi, or, or whatever, just come and say hi, and good to see you. We'll miss you.
Bart, did you have something to add?
I think you've all said nice words. Gabriel's certainly a class act, and Coachella is going to be very lucky to have him back at our expense. But sorry to see him go, but I think it's a class to show how well he's worked with all the personalities on the Planning Commission, and we've made progress while he was here, and wish him all the best. And also, Jennifer, if you ever want to come back to the Planning Department, we'll certainly support that decision.
Yeah, well said about my fellow commissioners and the chair. Gabriel, underneath your helm, the Planning Division was around very smoothly over the last couple of years, and we're grateful to have you. And congratulations, we'll catch up with you next time I go to Coachella musical.
All right.
Okay, oh, Chris.
Oh, I just want to congratulate both Gabriel and Jennifer. They did a fantastic job, and I'm sure they can sense the love coming from the Planning Commission. So good luck. And I wish you well.
Thank you. And I guess I do have one more task or observation for you, Gabriel. You mentioned that in June, there's a study session for objective design standards that you're setting up. Given that there's probably gonna, you know, we, there, there will be a change in the makeup of the Planning Commission, we don't know to what extent. I'm just thinking that maybe that, that might be something to, to, to do after June. So you could capture all of the, the new planning commissioners in that discussion, and might even be part of a broader discussion on what is design, and why do we have design standards and things like that, if there's a lot of new commissioners?
Yeah, that, that's a really good point, Chairman, and, you know, I, I've been working on this with Jennifer, so I think that, that makes a lot of sense. So I think we'll probably adjust it, and if the Plan Commission is, is okay with that, I think we'll go ahead and make that change to July or sometime after that.
Okay.
Well, Chair, I, I, yeah, I will be the contrarian here. I think, I think the, the planning division should have taken advantage of this planning commission. We're all been here for at least a four years, right? So we're more experienced if, if there's an overhaul of planning commission. So, you know, we have some expertise and a knowledge to share and to help. Maybe that can be can be repeated or continuing to the, the new planning commission, but, but let's not waste this opportunity. I think everyone here has a lot to offer.
Well, no, that's a good point. I, I was, and I was maybe incorrectly thinking of this as sort of a presentation or an instruction. And if it instead is more of what should we make objective design standards, then, yeah, Commissioner Wu's correct, we probably should have an inexperienced planning commission providing input to that. So I'm, maybe I misunderstand what the thrust of it is.
Actually, Jennifer, if, if you're still on, on the line, I think I could probably explain a little bit about the intent. I think part of it is talking about what objective design standards are. That's a big part of it, right? And so there might be a lot of questions. Do our design guidelines satisfy the objective design standards, right? Can we use that to apply to affordable housing projects? You know, is guidance from the general plan that we have enough for objective design standards? So that's going to be part of it. I think the other part is going to be able to get feedback in terms of maybe, you know, what should the city have in place? You know, do we need stronger objective design standards, right? Do we need to go a step further from what we already have on the books? But Jennifer, do you want to elaborate a little bit more? Because I know you've been in conversation with the consultant Placewords on this.
Yeah, so you are correct on, you know, part of it being what are objective design standards, and, you know, whether ours might, excuse me, meet those requirements. The other component would be the legal implications. So how they fit into new housing legislation, and how it would or would not impact developments within the city of San Clemente.
So it sounds like more of a presentation from a consultant on, on what objective, objective design standards are, rather than what, what do we think that they should be? Am I correct about that?
That is what we were planning, but there is the potential that perhaps staff misunderstood the request from the commissioners.
And, and I would say it, it probably, it wasn't a request from the Plan Commissioners, but it was something that we identified as, as being important to provide education to Plan Commission about. But perhaps it makes sense for there to be almost two parts to this, right? One is education on what it is, and then the other part is to really be able to gather feedback from the Plan Commission on maybe what the city should be considering for establishing those objective design standards.
So, so maybe one idea might be that it may be a study session where, you know, we've got a little structure where we, where we can or communicate from our experience areas that we think there should be objective design standards, and, you know, we need to understand a little bit about what, what that constitutes. But then maybe that could be part of an educational package for a new planning commission. Because any changes in our design standards, they, I don't think that we, we're going to have time between now and, you know, and the end of June to be making changes in our design guidelines. So they would be the ones doing that, you know, over the next year or two. So they would, they would need the education. But, yeah, I, you know, I, I don't, yeah, I think they, I think the education should be reserved for them, but Commissioner Wu is right, there's, there's you know, plenty of experience on, on this commission, and some of that experience, you know, you know, is going to be going away. So I don't know if we want to harvest some of that experience, that might be a good thing for us to do before the end of June. Does that sound, does that sound reasonable to everyone? Am I? Okay, silence is golden, so agreement.
Chairman, so, so I'm clear. Are, are you saying that the workshop, that's more about the educational component, that would happen sometime after June, and then a separate study session to, to discuss maybe what the city may need to have in place for objective design standards? Am I getting that wrong?
No, you're not getting that wrong. This is based on Commissioner Wu's comments that, you know, if, since it is an educational thing, I think the, the new commission should get the benefit out of education, because some of it will be wasted on, on us. Because depending on however the face of the planning commission changes. But, but I, I'm just saying, I, I agree with Commissioner Wu's point that there may be information that, that can be harvested from us and our, and our design experience for that objective for the creation of objective guidelines before our time is done. So that's kind of, that's kind of my point, you know, to inform staff and to, to help ultimately staff would carry whatever we might recommend or, or, or discuss to the new planning commission. That would be, you might, would hopefully be useful to the new planning commission, and that's what might, we might want to do before the end of June. Thanks. Zen, is that, does that mesh with what you were thinking?
Yeah, I think, I mean, my point is, if the city wants to establish objective design review standard, then the current planning commission and the design review board members should have helped to formulate that policy.
Yeah, Gabriel and Jim, I'll jump in real quick. It's really going to end up being Cecilia's call on this, when this, when this occurs. And can we get it done, anything accomplished before the end of June? Maybe not. But I would certainly recommend that if there is a, a big turnover that existing planning commissioners who choose can participate in the study session on this subject, even if they're not seated. But they'd be invited by staff to be part of the discussion, because we don't want to lose all that expertise that's been over the years.
Yeah, that, that's actually, that's a good idea. Maybe that's really the way to do it, and, and we could even invite previous planning commissioners. There's some people in the past, you know, the, the, you know, the Julias and the Michaels who were on the design review and did really tremendous jobs on there. So, so maybe that's really the way to go, is to have that session or even a maybe even a couple sessions where you've got previous people or other people participating to provide their expertise. Yeah, I like that.
Okay, great. And I'll share that with Cecilia, because I know she'll be part of formulating that for the Plan Commission, so.
Very good. Anything else for reports? If not, we'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we adjourn to the next regular meeting of the Planning Commission will be held on May nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one at six P M via teleconference.
Second, second on that.
Motion by, motion by Crandall, second by Blackwell. I'll call the roll. Commissioner Wu?
Hi.
Commissioner Crandall?
Aye.
Commissioner Blackwell?
Aye.
Commissioner Kozinski?
Aye.
And everyone votes aye, passes unanimously. So we'll see you all in two weeks. And Gabriel, good luck to you, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Take care.